Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board, and the SU Board will come to order. There are adjustments to the agenda. Are you aware of any adjustments Superintendent Pratt?
No, I haven't.
Assistant Superintendent Carey. Okay. Any board member adjustments?
David.
Yes, Priscilla.
David. Where are we going to discuss the busing? We were to have a meeting before school started and that was canceled. And I don't think you had the concerns of the board about the busing. So where is the discussion going to be?
Discussion, Priscilla, will take place under superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you.
And Priscilla, I want to ask you, you did get the email I sent you out earlier today on that?
Just barely read that. I just barely looked at it.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other adjustments before we get rolling here? Well, all right then. Do we have communication and public comment?
Yes, this is Ian Spartalotti. Can I just speak?
Yes, please, Ian. You are recognized.
All right, so my name is Ian Spartalotti. I'm a parent of a middle school student. And last week I had some very difficult communication with the superintendent's office over what turned out to be a very small problem. That conversation did become heated. And unfortunately, the tone and the focus of the discussion avoided the central problem I was trying to write about. I just want to communicate that I feel that the superintendent's office needs to communicate with the school community much more frequently and much more clearly. In the email thread, Mr. Pratt defended his communications with parents, but I have not seen a welcome back to school letter from him. And at this point, you know, I just don't know. I don't see how everybody can access needed information easily. I think they should be maybe giving, doing newsletters or communicating even weekly at this point with all the stuff that's going on with COVID and trying to come back. I know it's very difficult, but it seems like there should be a central place to, that's just given out to people, perhaps in a newsletter with phone numbers, contact people for who, whatever problem you might have. And, you know, I will say that I think communication from the superintendent's office hasn't been great from the beginning of his tenure. But, you know, now it's a significant problem because of this pandemic. And I would like for the superintendent's office to please investigate their own practices a little bit more critically and do a better job of speaking clearly to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Do we have any other communication and public comment? I'm not seeing any hands on the participants list. Am I missing any? Chris, are you aware of any?
I don't see any, no.
Okay. We have no new business for discussion and action. So we're going to move back into old business. And I need to begin by explaining to the board that the motion that was taken last week on Zoom meetings was not a valid motion. It was made by Molly Bannack, who is the high school chair. However, Molly was not a voting member that night. And the chair here did not realize that at the time. And unfortunately, nobody else on the board apparently did either. So we're going to have to consider a new motion. And I do have a proposed motion here. But I want to begin by sharing with the board advice that I received from Pietro Lynn on September 1st. And what Pietro wrote was he said, "David, I discourage use of the chat function during board meetings via Zoom. I believe it is inconsistent with the open meeting law." The OML, or Open Meeting Law, contemplates that the board will utilize Robert's Rules of Order. This means that the public may speak only when recognized by the chair or as part of a public comment period. The concept that members of the public can make statements during the course of the meeting without being recognized and identified does not seem to fit the OML, Open Meeting Law procedures. I compare the practice of letting people have running commentary or questions during the meeting to people shouting out during a normal meeting. We would not allow it and should not for virtual meetings. In terms of whether it is acceptable to use the chat function for public comment, I suppose it is fine, but I much prefer the practice of the public stating their positions with the camera on where possible. We should try to replicate a real meeting in the context of a virtual meeting. I encourage boards to turn off the chat function. And that's signed by Pietro Lynn, who is the district's attorney. He's obviously the lead attorney at Lynn, Lynn Blackman and Menitzky in Burlington. And having had some discussion with Deb Wright about this, and also having had some time to reflect on it, I'm going to ask if we can get a motion. And the motion would be as follows. It is the intent of the SU Board to affirm the chair's right to establish guidelines consistent with the open meeting law for the conduct of supervisory union board meetings. It further acknowledges the chair's intent to open the chat function of Zoom to take statements during the communication and public comment portion of the meeting. The chair may set a time limit for individual comments as necessary to ensure that the business of the meeting is conducted in a timely manner. These comments will be presented sequentially by the host and upon conclusion of communications and public comment, the public chat function shall be closed until the board's questions and answers period. At the end of the meeting, when the board shall again entertain questions presented through the chat function. So I appreciate getting a motion out on that. Have a motion, please. Not immediately seeing a motion.
I'm happy to move to make that motion. David, this is Cheryl Charles.
Thank you, Cheryl. And I would appreciate having a second on that.
Lynn Morgan, second.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, so Cheryl has the motion. Lynn has made the second. Is there discussion under the motion? All right, I presume we're ready for the question. Cheryl, you have a question. Cheryl, pardon me. Priscilla, please go ahead.
Can you explain how this will work? Are you saying that the chat function will be open to just put in questions at the time of the communications and public comments? And then again, at questioning and answer time? Is that what you're intending?
Well, Priscilla. Your question is a good one. Under communication and public comment, the board hears from the public but does not engage in dialogue. Under questions and answers that we have at the end of this meeting, if there are specific queries from the public, we can either attempt to answer those if we know what the answers are, or take those questions down and respond to them at the next meeting when we have those answers. In some cases, those answers might be furnished in written form. And probably in any case, they will be in written form for the benefit of the minutes. So I hope that's the answer to your question, Priscilla.
I'm concerned that if we're just asking for questions and we're just doing the other by opening it as a chat section, that we will get more chatter and less of the direct questions and stuff as we were getting in the past. So I don't know if there's a way of getting around that so that we're just getting the questions so that we can, it can be answered so it's not as disruptive to the meeting as some of those chat conversations were in the past. If that makes sense.
If you, if you pass this motion, you will be affirming the chair's right to establish guidelines consistent with the open meeting law for the conduct of supervisory union board meetings. And it would be my interpretation that the purpose of the chat, Priscilla, would be to allow members of the public to comment at the appropriate time during communication and public comment. Would also be an opportunity for members of the public to raise questions during the chat. I do not anticipate that the chat function would be used for a subdialogue, what Pietro Lynn refers to as the practice of letting people have running commentary or questions during the meeting to people shouting out during a normal meeting. So my response to you is it's simply another avenue for communication with the board and not intended as a sideshow, Priscilla.
Yeah, because comments, I think, should be done as this gentleman just did under public comments a few minutes ago. He spoke to the board. And if he's speaking to the board, then all of us can appreciate that and can be aware of his concerns. Whereas if it's put in the chat, a lot of times we miss those kinds of things and don't, don't see that. So I would, I would want that limited as far as the chat.
Well, Priscilla, I agree with you. And the way I envision the use of the chat for communication and public comment, it would be an avenue for the very shy or even the nonverbal to communicate with the board. And I think that's important. Are there other questions?
Similar letters. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. Are we ready for the question?
I got something, David.
Yes, George.
I just wanted to clarify something. That's assuming that, I'm good with the communication and public comments. That's assuming that question and, questions and answers would remain on the agendas. And because it's my understanding that that's not always been the case, right? So if that is there, then yes, it may be, that would fall in line with that motion. But my understanding is that it's not guaranteed to be there on normal circumstances. Is that correct?
George, you are correct in that. Questions and answers is something that I've added to SU agendas because we are now running our schools in very unusual times. And I think it's extremely important for parents, constituents, taxpayers to have the opportunity to have dialogue with the board that goes beyond the simple kind of comment that Ian helped, heaven help me on this last night, even Sabatallardi, pardon me, Ian, just offered. Ian has, Ian has provided us a very good example of a communication and public comment. An example of a question might be if we had a parent who wanted to know particulars of the SU's policy toward, you know, pick your topic. The, the purpose in this case for questions and answers, George, is to allow for some back and forth dialogue between constituents within the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union and their elected leadership.
No, I understand that. It sounded to me when you read the motion that questions and answers was a standard part of any agenda. I kind of wanted to clarify that, that it's not always the case. It's just a consideration at this point.
Well, this, this, this motion, George, is specific to the supervisory union board here and would not be incumbent on any of the constituent boards. The chairs under Robert's rules are responsible for the efficient conduct of their meeting. Certainly, if a body feels that the chair is ruling improperly, they can override the chair. But I would hope that with regard to your board or Union High School, that those boards, and of course, the Union Elementary as well, that those boards would establish rules that they feel are appropriate to their boards. I think right this moment that having the opportunity for a public interface is appropriate for this board. David.
Hang on one second. I agree, David. I just wanted to, it sounded like in the motion that questions and answers was typical business. And one last question, is there a timeframe on this type of a motion? Meaning, is this ongoing forever? Or is it just during Zoom meetings? You know, maybe, I don't know, maybe some clarity around that. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, George. The clarity is, is that the motion would stand until such time as it's modified by the supervisory union board. I predict that. Colin James.
How's it going? I just, isn't it, wasn't it generally, I mean, common practice to kind of allow somebody, like, you know, three minutes per person to speak either at the beginning of a meeting? Or I noticed sometimes with the SU Board, it's at the end of the meeting. My other question was, was there a cost to the, our attorney responding to your, the, the answers that are, that are being presented to us this evening?
Well, you, you have two answers coming, Colin. Your first question again, Colin?
I just meant, it's been kind of common practice. I mean, for most boards and at the chair's discretion, correct me if I'm wrong, to allow, you know, if there's a parent or a teacher or what have you, a member of our community, to allow them to speak depending on what the, the topic was. I know, like, the, the select board and the village trustees allow three minutes per person at the beginning of the meeting under public comment. I guess my question to you was, isn't, isn't that, hasn't that been a common practice? Or is it because of Zoom due to, you know, having our Zoom meetings because of COVID?
Well, Colin, the answer to your first question is communication and public comment has been a standing item on school board agendas for as long as I've been in Wyndham Northeast. In terms of the length of communication and public comment, that depends upon how many people you have wishing to make them. I would point out to you, Colin, that communication and public comment is not interactive. It's an opportunity for the public to state their case, if you will. We've added questions and answers because if there are members of the public who want to specifically question the board on a specific topic, that would allow them to do so.
Okay, I see. I'm sorry, I joined late, so I missed that, that second part of your statement.
Your second question, Colin, with regard to the cost of Pietro Lynn's opinion, all I can tell you is to watch the warrants for 15 minutes on September 1st and see what we were billed for it. I scrutinize these warrants fairly carefully. And it appears that on what I refer to as softballs, we're not always seeing a billing from Lynn, Lynn Blackman and Menitzky. But I cannot answer your question until we see a warrant which covers September 1st, Colin.
Okay, thank you so much. You know, again, I just, you know, I'm concerned, I just don't want, you know, every time we have a question, you know, we contact our attorney and eventually we're seeing all these bills come in. That, that was my concern. But thank you, David.
Okay, well, thank you, Colin. I'm going to restate the motion and then I'm going to see if we're ready for a vote.
I have something, David.
Oh, Jessa, okay, glad you're here. Go ahead.
Thanks. And forgive me if you've been over this and you can just tell me. So I found in my paperwork here Code C3, Public Participation in Board Meetings, adopted by the WNESU, January 21st, 2009. Has anybody made motion or made discussion about that?
Well, that, that, in the context of Zoom, hasn't, I believe, specifically arisen, Jessa?
Well, one of the items, public comment on agenda items. The chair will ask for comments on agenda items before action is taken by the board. When the number of people wishing to speak, we may limit it, et cetera. And there will also be public input on items not on the agenda, which is the public comment section. There will be time set aside for public input on items not on the agenda at every regular special or emergency meeting. It doesn't have questions and answers specifically, but it does say that we will ask for comments on agenda items before action is taken by the board every time.
Jessa, I would interpret that to refer to communication and public comment. That would certainly be the appropriate time for...
Well, it says before action is taken by the board on agenda items. So I'm thinking that's per item because there's the second section that also says there will be time set aside for public input on items not on the agenda.
Well, Jessa, I think both those topics are covered by communication and public comment. Someone who's, who attends a meeting for the purpose of commenting on an action that the board is contemplating should be doing so under communication and public comment. A member of the public who wishes to raise an issue which is not on the agenda should also be doing that under communication and public comment. And Jessa, I want to ask you a question. Have you actually heard the motion?
I have not heard the motion, but I just wanted to note that I don't think Chris had this in electronic format. And I actually found the piece of paper.
Let me, let me restate the motion, Jessa, and that might be useful in terms of clarification of intent here. And the motion is, it is the intent of the SU Board to affirm the chair's right to establish guidelines consistent with the open meeting law for the conduct of supervisory union board meetings. It further acknowledges the chair's intent to open the chat function of Zoom to take statements during the communication and public comment portion of the meeting. The chair may set a time limit for individual comments as necessary to ensure that the business of the meeting is conducted in a timely manner. These comments will be presented sequentially by the host and upon conclusion of communication and public comment, the public chat function shall be closed until the board's questions and answers period. At the end of the meeting, when the board shall again entertain questions presented through the chat function. There is your motion.
David. I would, I would disagree with the need for this motion in that, again, as Jessa has brought up, C3 has signed to 2009, it has not been deleted. It gives proper placement for public comment and which allows comment at the public comment period and during, before decisions are made on each agenda item. It is done for consistency so that board chairs, no matter who they are, or the board itself, does not disadvantage the public from their ability to comment on the actions that we are planning to take. It gives them the opportunity to speak on those matters, each and every one of them. And you can limit the amount of time by simply, it should be done, the organizational meeting at the beginning of each year, that each person gets a minute to do that. Or two, if you choose to be generous about that and can extend them the time, but extensions according to the statutes allow that you must do that by having the board vote on giving people more time to speak in the public about a matter on the agenda. I would agree that we should stick with C3 as it's already been signed and is consistent across the board for every meeting and that we do it the same. Now, chat is new. Let me add, add state to that. Chat is a new form. We're not used to it. However, at each agenda item, as people ask questions on the chat, you can ask the host to please give us the questions being asked by the, by them if they are not attached and they don't want to speak aloud. The questions might be there and we could simply take care of them as they come up at the point where we're about to make the motion and ask the host if there are any questions concerning this agenda item before we move on. It's simple as that. It should not be any more complicated and we should not disadvantage the public from their ability to speak to us and be as transparent as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Is there additional comment?
I do, I just want to follow up with something Deb said, that also the fact that we use auto-generated captions by leaving the chat function enabled at least to the host, it actually provides us a great disability accommodation for people instead of just, if you don't want the chat available to everybody watching, at least chat to the host, I think, should be enabled. As it, it could just be a disability accommodation.
All right, is there further comment? All right.
David?
Yes.
David?
Yes, Priscilla.
I would, I would move to table this till the next meeting because I think we need to have some further clarification and some further thought on it rather than just making, I just quickly.
All right.
It's really, the chat on all the time and yet, you know, other people are saying it, we're all over the place.
I'm going to roll call the board on the motion to table.
David, can I make a statement? David, Lynn.
Well, a motion to table is non-debatable, but I'll take your statement, Lynn.
All right. Feedback on what we've been talking about, I don't know, Jessa missed your reading of the letter from Pedro, and I'm not sure if Deb heard that as well. So there seems to be some differing of opinions as to whether this constant chat is appropriate where the lawyer thought it was against the open meeting laws. So it would be nice if we could get that letter printed out in the future so we could all take a look at it.
All right, well, well, Priscilla has a motion to table and I'm about to roll call it. If the motion is successful, we will include it with the board packet materials for the next motion. Priscilla, how do you vote on your motion to table?
Yes.
Thank you. Jessa? Motion to table?
Yes.
Okay. Lynn?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I'm going to come back to Jason Terry. Deb Wright?
Yes, David.
Oh, okay, I have a yes from Jason Terry. Deb?
Yes.
Okay, Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Okay. Brenda, are you in the room for the high school? Okay, I'm not aware that Brenda is here. All right, the, the motion to table carries. So that moves us forward to, sorry about the large pile of paper on my desk. This is forward to reports, superintendent, assistant superintendent, updated on reopening of schools. Chris, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
So my report entails quite a bit. So I'm just going to, I'm going to start off with the updates around daily screenings for students. That are a second day today. So daily health checks are required for all students at the first possible point of contact, meaning before students enter the building and regardless if they have already done the self-screening at home. Health checks include a temperature check and required questions. Parents of younger students need to provide answers to the required daily health questions. Non-contact thermometers will be used with the exception of ear thermometers for the buses during the cold months. Currently, there are three different Google screening forms that we are using for both student screening and employee screening. They are onsite screen, these three are onsite screening used at the door and as students get off the bus and before they enter the building. Second one is employee self-screening forms, which are done at home before the employees leave school. And the third one is a daily screening form that is done at home, students leave. And the third one is a daily screening form that is done at home, students leave before school or get on the bus. After these forms are filled out, regardless of the origin, the data is collected onto an Excel spreadsheet that is available for staff to view on the Google Drive. These forms are automatically separated out, so each school has their own searchable spreadsheet. So when students arrive at the school, they can see the screening results that were done at home and check it against the screening that is done when they arrive at school. Nurses and screeners have the ability to search by temps, dates, and names. The info is, the info that is added into the Google Forms is tagged automatically to red if a student has a temperature of 100.4 or above. So that's the current tools that we're using for screening for students and for employees. Moving on to transportation. Currently, we have 150 students using the WNESU Transportation. With 15 buses, we are able to spread out these students while they are on the bus to accommodate social distancing while they are riding the bus. So right now, out of those buses, we have the Grafton Bus has 16 students, the Athens Grafton Bus has 12 students, Saxton's River Bus has 16 students, one of the Rockingham Buses has 12 students, the Westminster West Bus has six students, the Westminster Bus has 10 students, the Bellows Falls Union High School Bus has 20 students, the other Rockingham Bus has eight students, Saxton's River Second Bus has 10 students, the bus that goes to RBTC has 20. And then we have various buses for Student Services that go to Kendall Farm has two, High School has 10, Middle School and Elementary has three. We have a bus that goes to Windsor with two students, another bus that goes to the Meadow Retreat with three students. And those last five that I mentioned are special education bus related for a total of 150 students. As far as screening for students before they get on the bus, we had to change this practice. Students will now be screened as they exit the bus before they enter the school or the playground. The change to the screening was due to the fact that we do not have the staffing to be on the buses at this time. We do plan on continuing to move forward with having monitors on the bus as we identify or hire these positions. We have posted for bus health monitors, but at this point, we've had one applicant that we are interviewing and hopefully they will start. I do understand the concern of this change and we plan on working on a solution as we continue to move forward. At this point, the only other option that we would have would not to be run the buses and this is not something I would advocate that the board decides to do. We have families who have signed up for transportation and doing this not because they want to, but because they have to. I will continue to urge families to transport their children to school impossible as well as monitor their child's health each morning before they send their child out to catch the bus or leave for school. This means monitoring the temperature and symptoms as much as possible. Moving on to HVAC systems and assessment. I have reached out to ME Engineering. They are currently working with Efficiency Vermont as part of the Vermont School Indoor Air Quality Grant Program. This program was developed to help improve HVAC systems in Vermont K through pub, K through 12 public schools. And they're related to heating, ventilation, filtration, and cooling of HVAC systems. Under this grant program, ME Engineering will assist us in conducting an assessment that will include a performance inventory of all the school's HVAC systems. The key to determining the level of performance of each heating, cooling, and air conditioning system is establish a baseline of capacity, conditions, and current performance. Once we have established this baseline, we can compare each of these recommendation criteria in the Vermont School Indoor Air Quality Program that is aimed at improving performance and implementing measures in line with the COVID-specific guidelines from the U.S. Center for Disease Control and the Prevention and the American Society of Heating Refrigeration and Air Conditioning. This criteria includes things like outdoor air exchanges, turnovers, heat capacity, filter, air filtration, and performance, etc. So I had spoken with them as soon as today and we're trying to set up a time that they can come in to various schools, look at the systems, and speak to the maintenance employees that work on the HVAC systems and monitor them. Moving on to face masks and PDDs. Students need to wear their masks if they are able to at all times when they are indoors and in outdoor situations where they may not be able to keep six feet between themselves and others. We picked up, we continue to add to our PPD supplies, including we now have gowns, cloth face masks, supply for students so they can be rewashed. We continue to add to the gloves. The state provided each school with two gallons of hand sanitizer. So we continue to build on our PDD supplies for cleaning. We also added to some of the schools, we have the 360 Clark's machines with the electrostatic that we use to clean the surfaces and areas. And I believe we also have one of those machines for the buses as well. Moving forward a little bit away from the COVID issues and procedures that we're dealing with, I thought it was necessary to bring to the board's attention that the US News Report has ranked Bellows Falls Union High School number 16 out of your 45 or 65 schools in Vermont. And the national ranking from Bellows Falls Union High School was 4,649 out of 17,792 schools. So I want to congratulate Bellows Falls Union High School in their ranking in the US News Report. Before I have Dr. Carey get into curriculum and grants, I've asked the principals to attend tonight's meeting just to give the board an update in regards to how the first few days of school went. So I think I will start with Mrs. Bukowski, could you give a quick report out to the board members on how it went?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Karen Bukowski, principal of Bellows Falls Middle School. We, I'm very happy and proud to report that we welcomed 85 students in Cohort A into our building. The health screenings were done efficiently. Our students, teachers, and staff are all doing a great job adjusting to the new procedures. And I am confident that tomorrow when we welcome Cohort B back to school, they will also be successful. Pat, our food services coordinator for Bellows Falls Middle School has done a great job in getting the lunches out for the half-day. All of our students are being fed, whether they're in person or through pickups. And that the buses have been running very smoothly. I think we had one student get on the wrong bus and that was easily remedied. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Do you have a tentative figure for your B-group population?
Yes, that group is a little bit larger. It's holding at roughly around 90.
Thank you.
David, could we hold questions to the end so I can hear the principals?
Yes, sir.
I'd like numbers on the classrooms though, when the principals give their reports.
You want numbers? I can give you numbers right now. You want individual pod numbers or just overall grade level numbers?
I'd like to know the numbers in the classrooms and how that's working.
All right, so for fifth grade, the classroom, which is the pod sizes, the same, are averaging between eight or nine students and that's working fine. For sixth grade, and this is Cohort A I'm speaking to, the, we have two pods, one is at nine students and one is at 10 students for sixth grade. For seventh grade, we have three pods. The average size of those three pods is 10 students. And in eighth grade, we have three pods also and the average size of those pods for Cohort A is eight students.
Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Hodgson, would you like to go next, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And again, I apologize folks for arriving late, but I suppose better late than never. I have to kind of echo Karen's sentiments that things have gone very well so far. I don't have classroom by classroom numbers. Our setup, I guess I would say, is different than the elementaries and the middle schools in that we are still running our regular master schedule. So when we break up into Cohort A and Cohort B, and because it's done alphabetically, you could have a class of, you literally could have a class of 25 students and have five in one cohort and 20 in another. And I don't have that extreme. I think the most extreme might be a three and a 13 and like a 16-student classroom, but so, but within that setting, teachers can manage very well and students have been doing very well. Again, we're also moving into Group E tomorrow, but the students and the staff have really been working hard and very successfully to implement all of these new procedures that we have. There has been, I get the sense that students are really happy to be back in the building and I know that the staff are happy to have them back as well. We've also started our athletic practices. That was the first day yesterday. For students that are not going straight from the classroom to practice, we are screening them when they show up. For example, if they're in Group B and it was a Group A day, so we're really working hard to implement the safety protocols as they've been set up. So things are going well.
Thank you, Chris. Liz?
Sure, Liz Hardy, Principal Westminster Center School. Like Karen and Chris had just mentioned, we had a really great first two days. It went pretty smoothly. Students were pumped to be back and staff was just as excited to welcome them back. I really want to thank the parents for being so unbelievably understanding and patient because they had a lot of new routines and systems in Westminster. Our arrival and dismissal was very different than it's been in years past. Adam and our maintenance team have been totally on top of things, keeping our school sanitized and safe. Melissa continues to deliver meals to all students. All students had breakfast and lunch. Students have been awesome adhering to the mask and social distancing with minimal reminders. We've really taken advantage of the gorgeous weather this weekend, or this week, gotten students outside as much as possible. Chickens are in our chicken coops. The students have really been out in the garden harvesting and planting. And we've really taken advantage of these afternoons with the half-days as we've definitely been able to evaluate our new systems as a staff and make these minor adjustments as needed. So as far as my numbers, I guess kindergarten in the class, I have about six on one day, four on another day. Second grade, I have two on one, on one group, nine on another group. Third grade, it's pretty even, nine and nine on two groups. Fourth grade, there's 13 between two classrooms on one group and 11 on two classrooms in the next Group B. Fifth grade, we have 13 between two classrooms on Group A and 12 between two classrooms on Group B. And sixth grade, we have seven on one day and nine on another day.
Thank you, Liz. Helen?
Hi, hello. This is Helen Richards-Peel. I'm the principal at Grafton Athens Elementary School. And just like my three colleagues before me, we've had a wonderful beginning to the school year. Things have been running pretty smoothly and we've been enjoying this absolutely wonderful weather and getting outside and doing read-alouds and shared reading and all those good activities as much as we can. Children take their mats and like little ducklings, follow each other outside and make great circles and have a good time just being outside and enjoying it. And I think the kids are totally pumped to be back in school and very excited. And so are the parents, excited to have their students finally in the building and doing the great learning that the staff have been just incredible, pulling this off together and learning all these new procedures and being so enthusiastic and supportive of all the students and all the families. It's been a great, great beginning. So the numbers, we have 18 students on Cohort A, typically on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then Cohort B, which is typically Thursdays and Fridays, is 16 students. This enrollment has been very fluid this week. We've had mostly kids coming in or coming back with new enrollments from families who have decided to stay up in Vermont and not go back to New York and have enrolled their children. And we have children who families have decided to change from the complete virtual learning environment to come back to being at school. So it's been an ever-changing numbers as the week has progressed. So in terms of the cohorts, one and two are together and that's three on one day and four on the next. Third and fourth is four and then three, five, six is eight and then five in kindergarten is three and five. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Carrie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Carrie Kennedy, the principal of Central. So we've also had some great days back. We appreciate everybody's support in bringing the smaller groups in the beginning here. So we have had, I can go through the cohort numbers. So 12 and 13 in each cohort for kindergarten and that's across two classrooms. 15 and 16 in first grade, both across two classrooms. 16 and 11 in second grade, across two classrooms. Third grade, there's only one classroom this year and there's 13 and 13 on each cohort day. And then fourth grade, there's also only one classroom this year. And there's nine and then 14 for tomorrow's actual cohort. So we have been able to have a lot of discussions with families around medically fragile students and to be able to bring them back in, in a really concentrated effort right now with support staff, really supplying a lot of assistance for us with our medically fragile students and getting everybody in. But we agree, you know, it's been wonderful. Families have been most helpful in making sure we follow the protocols and lining up for arrival and dismissal. We've changed our arrival times and dismissal times, so we've really thrown everybody for a curveball there and we appreciate their support. So everything's gone well so far.
Thank you, Carrie. And Laura? You're still muted.
I took my video off, but not my mute. So hello, everyone. We too, like everyone else has shared, have had a successful and healthy start and I really believe that was thanks to all of our planning and preparation in those extra days before school started really helped too. I want to acknowledge my staff for their unwavering commitment to ensuring a health, a safe and healthy start, to our families for their ongoing support and awesome questions, and to, of course, our students who have adapted remarkably to our new protocols and routines. It's really been an awesome start to our school year. Our health screenings are going well. Our food service is fantastic as usual. Lyndon Laurie in the kitchen and getting hot meals delivered up to the third floor is going well. We too are using our outdoor spaces a lot the last couple of days and plan to continue to do so. And our attendance has been great in person and also the students that are participating, you know, tuning into our morning meetings remote. So we've had a great attendance rate. As far as our numbers go, we currently have 63 hybrid students, 31 in Group A and 32 in Group B. Our kindergarten has a total of 11 kids with a split of four and seven. Our first grade also has 11 with a split of six and five. Second grade has 14 with a 7-7 split. And third grade has 18 with a 9-9 split. And fourth grade has nine students with a 5-4 split. We have 13 kids in the VTVLC program and we have seven students whose families have opted to home study. That is it.
Thank you, Laura. I think we got all the principals. I don't think I missed any of you. Oh, yes. Carrie? Carrie already went. I think we got everybody.
Do you need preschool? Is Jennifer there?
I don't know if Jen is, um, I don't see Jen with us tonight. So next, I want Dr. Carey to talk a little bit about curriculum and grants and what we've been doing in that area. Dr. Carey?
Great, thank you. So my first, first thing I want to talk about is the Vermont Virtual Learning Collaborative, the VTVLC. We finalized accounts for students opting for the Virtual Learning Collab. And they will be receiving 100% of their curriculum remotely through the Vermont Virtual Learning Collab. And people have just been really patient and gracious and kind in the, the amount of, it's, it's rough going. I think because the, there's, they're new at this collaborative piece where it's the schools are collaborating with the Vermont Virtual Learning Collab. So when we give them the names and we, you know, we have to go through our, our registration system. So that, those names have to go and be uploaded with them. We've had so many changes coming and going and they've actually had to postpone classes to actually start on Monday, the 14th. They were supposed to start on Tuesday, this past Tuesday, and they couldn't. But we have been, you know, connecting with the families. We have 143 students in the remote program. 50 students are in grade six and seven and eight. 93 kids are K to five. So we're, we're really pleased to announce our VTVLC district coordinator is Michelle Harrington. And Michelle has done an outstanding job of enrolling and unenrolling students from the program as there have been many changes requested. Michelle will be making contact with the remote learning families at least once a week during the school year. So once school gets started for the families, in addition to the classroom teacher connecting with the students and families at least twice a week on a personal level, Michelle will also be connecting with these families as well. It's been a little difficult to get the information out because we're not, we weren't getting a lot from the VTVLC. There were so many changes. But the minute they give us information, we send it right out. So things are going to be better once school starts. I think they're just making those, those fine tuning pieces. In addition to their virtual teachers who will make personal contact with the students twice a week, these students also have the ability to meet with their peers on Wednesdays in morning meeting with the, the district classes. So if I'm a third grade student at Central Elementary School, but I'm doing the VTVLC, I can still link in and hook into the class, the classroom meeting on Wednesday morning with my peers, the friends I would have been in, in class with. And that way we're keeping the A cohort together with the B cohort and with the virtual cohort. So we were trying to connect them all on Wednesday mornings.
Yeah, and let me add to that is that any student who's A or B in the virtual, though, you know, they especially at the elementary levels, they'll be logging in to participate with their classes each morning. That's how we're taking attendance this year. So I just wanted to clarify that for people.
Thank you, thank you. We have seven district teachers as well as two special ed teachers that have, and I'm speaking not about the high school, I'm just speaking K to eight. And so we have nine great teachers who volunteered to do this and they're doing a great job. Really, everyone is just working overtime. It's, it's putting it together is a big task, but it'll get going. And once it's off the ground, it will go smoothly. We're also excited because all the students are in school and we have been doing some great, before the kids came, the students, we had some excellent professional development. In addition to the building level training that provided by the principals, we started the school year with a one-day course in transforming trauma, helping schools become healing communities, provided by Dave Melnick. And he's well-known in the state for, for this, this kinds of, this kind of training, helping us to understand the kinds of things that kids experience at home, why they, when they come to school, how sometimes they react in ways that we don't understand. But he helps us to, to open our minds and gives us some kind of what, gives us the strategies to help deal with these, with difficult students because we need, we're trying to understand what they're going through. Especially being out of school six months. It's very important. Every employee in the district was able to attend this training. The workshop showed the impact that chronic trauma has on the developing child, including in-depth exploration of the expansive effects of chronic trauma. These effects are often referred to as the seven domains of impairment. And that's coined by the National Child Traumatic Stress Network. We learned that these seven domains with an eye towards their application in the school system and to focus on ways to transform our knowledge into action. These interventions and strategies will be compatible with and build upon many current initiatives designed to support students, support a positive school culture and climate for all students. So we're really looking at the social emotional piece. We also had Leslie University present a phonics and word study training for our elementary classroom teachers who will be using Fontes and Pennell classroom curriculum. This is a continuation of a series of trainings that the teachers will have this year. Last spring, WNESU was able to use major grant funding for every elementary classroom in the district to receive a complete set of literacy resources, including classroom libraries, independent reading sets, guided reading sets, interactive read aloud sets, book club sets, phonics and word studying materials and teaching materials. Each classroom is now filled with many, many books developed by experts in literacy development. We feel very fortunate to offer this curriculum and these rich resources to our students. Our elementary principals have provided an extensive training for their teachers during the, the PD days before school started, using the Distance Learning Playbook by Doug Fisher, Nancy Frey and John Hattie. This shares strategies and teaching for engagement and impact in any setting. Learning modules and, learning modules strategize, strategies for both in-school and distance learning include establishing routines, teacher clarity, teacher-student relationships, planning instructional units, feedback and grading. And I just have to commend the elementary principals for coming together and taking advantage of this. This was a resource I found. I sent it to them just wondering and they jumped on it and they have come together and the four elementary principals developed a kind of a team approach to teaching or to sharing this information to the teachers. Even during this week when they had half-days, they've really worked hard in order to, to really brush up on their skills teaching remotely and as well as the hybrid to students in class and the students remotely. So I'm, I'm really excited for them and I'm appreciating everything that the elementary principals have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Haas, you want to dive in a little bit of student services?
Yeah, thank you, Chris. So, you know, we're working on revising, you know, the almost 300 IEPs for students. And those are the individual education plans for the students who are identified as needing special education. And so a lot of those revisions, case managers are trying to connect with parents and guardians via the phone, have a discussion about what services and how they'd be adjusted in the hybrid model. And then we are setting up meetings, you know, when parents are asking or we're feeling like we need to have a deeper discussion. And what we're trying to do is we're, we're setting up basically for two scenarios right now in, in developing the service page. And so we're looking at what the student's current educational model is. So whether it's the hybrid model or it's the remote model that Dr. Carrie just spoke about. That's the services that we're writing. And then we're writing in a contingency plan. And if a student is hybrid, we're writing a contingency plan that would go to 100% remote. If that is determined, excuse me, then, the, the way the district or maybe a student needs to go, we, we don't have to have another meeting. We can just kind of flip right to it. For the student who is already 100% remote, the contingency plan is we're writing it for a hybrid. Because with the anticipation, if a, if for some reason things are not working for a family, we, we need to reconvene a team or look at, should that student come back into the building? Or at the semester break, or when the, they have that opportunity to switch back to hybrid, we can just go ahead and implement that plan. We've chosen not to do an in-person, fully 100% in-person contingency plan because we really don't know what that would look like if we were to go back into, you know, given all the constraints we have and everything. And so we, we felt that it was prudent to spend our time focusing on those two. And that once we, you know, had a better idea of what 100% in-person looked like, we could, we could develop that plan. As Dr. Carrie said, our two special educators who are working with the collaborative have been working really hard. And, and what's really great is one of them used to work for the collaborative. So we've kind of got an inside that's kind of helping that process. We are having to develop some curriculum for our our more intense needs kids who aren't able always to access academic curriculum the same way as other kids. They tend to, we, we focus more on life skills building with them. So we're having to develop some curriculum for them, which is coming along. You know, holding meetings as, as I said, and, you know, everything I've heard back from case managers and teachers is they are just excited to have the kids back in the building.
Thank you, Andy. Holly from Food Services, do you want to give an update on grants and, and what's been going on in the wonderful world of food services? We can get back to him. I don't know if he's logged off. Finish it up with Flora, new business manager. If there's anything you want to add to, to the report?
Hi. I want to say thank you to all the principals for the work they've been doing as well being patient with me. I am learning and adjusting. We have changed a couple of things in, in the business office. Adjusted our schedule to be more proactive. We are going to make some adjustments as well. With clearing accounts that we have. So we could just have everything in just one place as well. We just are short staff at the moment, but the current staff that we have, we are working really hard to keep everything up to speed and today. And that's what I have right now.
Great. Thank you, Flora.
Thank you.
A question?
Yeah, I just want to thank all the principals for taking time of their busy schedule to join us tonight. And it's the only, the second day of school and not even the first day for others. And so I really appreciate all the principals, the administrators, taking the time to join us tonight on such a busy schedule. So that's the central office report.
Mrs. Lambert, you are recognized.
I have an question for the business manager. I'd like to know what procedures and policies are in place to assist the employees in resolving pay issues? And is the office open for them to do that or, or what's happening so that they can take care of those problems?
So the office is always open. I did have sent emails out to everybody that the best practice is to just email us or actually call. I did put my direct number there so they could just contact me immediately if they need anything, any issues that they have. And if it is something that they need to come in, we're making appointments. So we are open at seven in the morning up to 3:30 for walk-in, for appointments. We are not taking walk-ins because of COVID and, you know, we wouldn't want a mass of people just coming in. But we are definitely having appointments, emails, Zoom, whatever works for them. And as for payroll, we, this is the first time that payroll was posted early. We completed everything. So everything should be fine for Friday. We are short staff right now. One of our staff is out and we are one step short as well. But we are trying to do our best. We have open door policy, but you know, because of COVID, it's just by appointment right now.
Follow-up?
Thank you. No, I, I think she answered that and, and that was basically what I wanted to know, just to make sure that there was some opportunity because we had so many problems last year.
Yeah, I'm definitely aware. That's why we sent an email out with a timeframe that we have so people could schedule their appointments. Joellen is always open to say a little bit later if it is somebody that just can't come in between seven and 3:30. But that's something that we could always work around, you know? That's what we have right now. Zoom phone calls. We are there to help. But, you know, it has to be by appointment. We can't take walk-ins because of COVID.
Thank you, Flora. First off, I also want to thank you for getting out the reports that we saw a day or two ago. That's a huge improvement. And well, your boards are paying attention. I'm sure I'm not the only one who's noticed those. And I do have a question. You say you're, you're short one person in the business office. What function would be covered by that? I realize you're cross-training as well, but the Marilyn Frederick report indicated we were already short half a person by the conventional standard. So where's your shortage?
So right now we have Teresa Taylor. She is out on a personal leave. We're not sure when she'll be back. And she is actually our senior accountant. And she was the one that was covering my position. So that's why I am asking you to be patient with me. I am trying my best to learn on the daily pieces, a little bit for each of my staff as, as trying to catch whatever is happening. And we do have an accounting clerk position posted. So anybody that wants to apply, say that, it would just help for that shortage. And Teresa, we are working, everybody taking a little bit of ourselves, you know, to just everything flowing as much as
So if Teresa were in the office, you would still be short one person? Is that correct, Flora?
Yes.
Okay. And okay, and you, you've already described the steps you're taking to address that.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for your answers. Are there other questions either for Flora or for Chris or for Lynn?
I believe Cheryl's got her knee hanging up.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Chris, start, starting with you for a moment. Where are, I, I believe that we are fully staffed in terms of teachers based on the numbers I've heard. We, my first question is, do we have any personnel openings for the, from the instructional staff? And the second part of that is where are we with hiring and the fulfillment of needs around paraprofessionals?
Well, as, I mean, as far as I know, for the most part, we are staffed educationally. There may be a few, you know, positions, maybe one position at the high school that we're trying to fill. But as far as elementary and middle school, I think we're all set there. As far as trying to get more our positions specifically to the health monitors, like I said earlier, we've, we've posted it, we've had it posted and to date, we've only had one applicant and we're, you know, we bringing that applicant on, you know, sometime this week to see if we can get them on board and she'll meet with a school nurse and the transportation coordinator to find out. So we can figure out what the best placement is for that health coordinator.
Chris?
Jason Terry?
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you, all the principals, Mr. Pratt. Also wanted to thank Harley Saloner. Harley, good job over the summer and good job, continued good job. Had a couple of questions. Mr. Pratt, you had mentioned at the beginning about cold months for the buses. I know we had talked about six weeks reevaluating the plan and I'm wondering, I know it's only been a couple of days, but I'm
I know it's only been a couple of days, but I'm wondering what, if any, have we started the plan for opening schools fully after six weeks after it continues to be excellence by the principals and the teachers and, you know, no COVID and all those types of things. I really want to get to phase three as, as soon as possible. That's, that's, that's my goal. And I think that's largely a lot of the community's goal also. So I realize it's been two days, but you know, we got to start thinking about phase three planning and getting open fully. I mean, everyone was commenting on how great things are going. And that's good. And I'm, I'm happy for that. And I figured as much as soon as things got open and rolling that, you know, things would kind of work itself out. So I was just wondering if anybody could comment, any principals or anything like that on that. Thank you.
Comment. We're going to continue to assess the situation and, and bring kids back as soon as we can and as safe as we can. But after only two days, we haven't really had a chance to, to debrief, but we continue to keep the data. So as time in COVID allows us, we can stop bringing kids back in.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
David.
Deb.
I had a financial question I asked. I didn't see that I got an answer on it, but I'm not sure if I should do it here. However, I will do it at the next meeting if I don't get an answer. I'll just go back in a second. And request it. My question is this, we are doing everything we can. And we want parents to be as careful and safe with their children as possible, not, not get into large groups, do events that'll be problematic. What are we doing to save, to protect us, our children from the teachers and paraprofessionals and support staff? Do they sign any documents that say they won't go to large events, that they won't go visiting? Paper that they have not visited since COVID started? What are we doing to prevent that end? As we are working on the, on the students, because it's our families who are suffering here, who can't get their kids to go back to school five days a week and cannot afford to survive with just one job. So I want, I'd like to know what is being done.
You know, I, you know, as superintendent, you know, I don't, I think the principals as well, we can't control what the teachers do outside their, their office day. I'm responsible for what they do during the school day. And make sure that we're following our procedures. And through the CDC and our own procedures to make sure that we're keeping students healthy. And that means including the adults have to go through the same steps in regards to screening and monitoring on a daily basis as well. So we control what we, what we can during the school day. And all of us, like I said, even as adults, we are all following the same procedures as the kids. We're filling out the forms. I said at the beginning of the meeting, there are three different forms, one specifically for staff and students. Ones for the staff and the nurses who are screening kids as they come into the school or before they enter the school. And the third one is the pre-screening that is done at home before kids leave the house. So we've got all covers areas, but you know, what they do outside of their, their, their role as educators, it's beyond me.
Deb, is that a sufficient answer for you?
No, I wouldn't say so. I have a, a grandson who is autistic and he goes to a school up in the Windsor area. They're in small, small pods. However, they were required to have the families and themselves basically swear that they would not go visiting, do any events or anything during the school year in order to minimize the risk of COVID. That was the teachers too, not just the students, in order to allow for them to go to work, to school five days a week. They go five days a week. And they, they, by sticking to that, we're preventing risk from the children and also risk from the, the staff. And that's extremely important that it has to be a two-way street, not just a one-way. I understand what Mr. Pratt is saying, but at the same time, we are, we don't want this to fail. You understand that's, it's, it's critical that it doesn't fail and the entire class is down because either side comes back in with COVID. And I understand what you're doing and the precautions. I just think people should pledge to do more. That's all.
Well, thank you, Deb. I, I have to say that I do agree with Chris's assessment as to how much control we have over teachers when they're not within our environment. And when I say teachers, I'm talking about all staff. It might be instructive if we were to find out from our attorney Pietro Lynn, what rights the schools may have outside of the classroom. However, I think that much of this is controlled by the collective bargaining agreement. And I think that perhaps you and Chris and I could have a offline discussion about that. Jason Terry.
I, I just like the, Deb, thank you for mentioning that. I, that's one of the things I wanted to talk about also. It's kind of like the students are in a bubble. And, you know, they're not going anywhere other than school and home, but the teachers, you know, should also be in that bubble. And I'm hoping that many of them are doing that. I think that's a good point. Thank you.
All right, Andy. Yes, Priscilla.
Mr. Hodgson.
I think we have done voluntary type things, like the seniors at the high school would sign an agreement that they wouldn't do all of these things to reach graduation and stuff. I think you could do maybe a voluntary type thing to make it more aware and so that you would, you know, that teachers would commit to and be willing to commit to restricting their activities to be able to keep our students safe. So maybe a voluntary type thing would work. We also need to go back to bus monitoring. By deliberately not having a meeting last week when the board us to do that. And, and to allow us to determine our feelings and our concerns about the busing and the monitoring. The superintendent has basically taken that responsibility upon himself that if child is ill and there is a reason to quarantine, that he's comfortable with taking that responsibility. Hopefully none of our students will be, have COVID. But other symptoms do show up similar to COVID and kids could have to quarantine. So at this point, recognizing that 150 students are riding the buses and need it. I think we need to at least encourage the fact that we've got to get monitors on those buses if they are to run. Are there any parents out there that would be willing to do that and take the temperatures before they get on the buses so that there's a better control over the situation and helpful? We're not willing, he's not willing to decrease to the three to six feet distance in the classroom for elementary students, which the state has said is possible. But he has been willing to take away the monitoring, which they had said was important. So I really think it's crucial at this point. And I know my statement is strong. But I feel that by not having that discussion, he has taken things out of the board control that the board should have had a right to at least have had a discussion on prior to the busing going forward.
Thank you, Priscilla. Jack Brier.
Thanks.
Just want to say that I know that the, that the NEA and our local is looking for a series of accommodations. And want a memorandum of understanding to make some adjustments in the way we operate. And I know that it's oft, it's, it's always uncomfortable to have have protocols in an agreement that asks teachers to, or, or any employee to, to conduct themselves a certain way when they're not in our, you know, in our buildings and on our grounds. But I don't think it's unreasonable to suggest that we might at least open a discussion with them about, about adhere, about an agreement to adhere to basic social distancing protocols. Some other districts are in fact doing that. I don't know if they're doing it in Vermont, but they certainly are doing it in other states. I think it's a reasonable quid pro quo. I, I recognize it won't be one that will be welcomed by everybody, but I think if, if one side's asking for some accommodations, it's perfectly appropriate to have, have us ask for a couple as well. So I got.
Thank you, Jack. Fellas Falls Junior High School Principal, Christopher Hodgson.
Thank you, David. I just, I'm not sure whether or not any of the board members have seen the screening form that is used by staff and students. Has that been shown to you folks? Okay, so
I have not seen it, Chris.
So I just want to share with you, not that, I'm not saying that you should have, but some, I can't say, not having a grand vision for everyone else's vision for what that commitment from the teachers needs to be. I just want you to know that every day that a staff member has come into our building since the first day of in-service, they've had to answer this question or these questions. Have you been in close contact with someone with COVID-19 in the last 14 days? So that's one of the screening questions. And the other one, which might be a little bit more to point is in the past 14 days, have you traveled to an area that requires quarantine when returning to Vermont? And these are both yes or no questions. And so I'm sharing that with you to acknowledge that that's not the same as signing on the dotted line that I am committing to not do that. But they are through this survey, and everyone does it, stating whether or not they have put themselves at risk and therefore the students at risk. And as I said, I, I am sure that there are other ways to measure that safety. But again, I just want folks to know that there's a certain part of that that already exists within the system that we have. Again, a question about whether or not you have been in close contact with someone with COVID-19. And, and again, more importantly, and more to point, I think here, have you been anywhere that's going to require a quarantine in under 14 days? Just wanted to call that to your attention.
Thank you, Chris. Jessa West Clark.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually wondering, since Mr. Hodgson is first on the list. Do we have any penalties built in for people who lie on the form?
Um, I, I haven't come across that, but I guess I can't say that there's a penalty tied to that, but for staff or students. Concerned about the professionalism of our staff, if that's what you're asking about.
What about parents and students? Is that part of their code of conduct, at least for high school students?
We really haven't tied a code of conduct to this survey. So I don't know, I, I don't, I can't say that that, that has happened. So.
Okay. Yeah. And then back to paras on buses, didn't you? Wasn't it a thing last year that we needed paras on buses to control the kids? There was some bus drivers that didn't feel safe because they had to police behavior and try to drive the bus. And we had agreed, we actually negotiated with the union, I think like an extra dollar an hour for paras to be bus monitors? Is that happening at all? Or do we just not have the staff now for that?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're correct, Jessa. What it is right now is we just do not have the staff with the increase in the needs and trying to, kids on IEPs, 504s. We just, you know, we don't have the support staff to get the paras on the bus. We can't put paras on the bus if we don't. You know, can't find the people who want to do it. Like I said, we've gotten, we've had it posted and we've had one person interested in being on the bus. You know, but that's something that moving forward, we want to continue to work towards. So, no, you're, you're, you're correct. And we want to continue to do that. But right now we don't have the, the staff. They're all tied up with IEPs, 504, Student Services.
Thank you, Chris. Priscilla.
You do realize that Cheshire County turned yellow last week. And so that is an area that you have to quarantine if you go out.
It is now back to green. Yeah.
Is it back? I didn't check today.
Yep, we're all good. Keen's fine. Go do your shopping.
Um, I also had, since the angry parents came to me instead of Jack now. I actually had a complaint from a high school parent that there is mask breaks being allowed inside by at least one teacher.
Sure. If I could speak to that for a moment, there was a recent guidance in the form of frequently asked questions. And if, if you'd like to, I'm sure Mr. Pratt could share that with you, not here tonight, because he probably doesn't have any access to it. But within those frequently asked questions through the AOE, what was authorized was 10-minute mask breaks within the classroom. So I can't emphasize enough, at the high school, we were doing it exactly the way we're supposed to do it. So you can rest comfortably with that, exactly the way we're supposed to do it.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
And then the only other thing, I had a parent contact me actually while Lynn was speaking. They have students, their children go to the middle school and the Saxon River Elementary School. And they actually reached out and they were told, no, their children cannot join morning meetings on Wednesdays. So I just, somebody's giving inconsistency.
Repeat that again? Students could not what?
Join morning meeting on Wednesdays.
I'm happy to.
Inconsistency.
This is Laura Hazard. I'm happy to speak to that. I'm not aware of that situation at all. I've had one parent express interest in joining on Wednesdays. And my communication to that parent was that for part of the morning meeting, it would be appropriate and probably the second half of the morning meeting would be more focused on science instruction and getting the students in the hybrid model familiar with the science work that they would be doing that day. So that part wouldn't necessarily apply to the student, but left it up to the parent to decide, given that framework.
Okay. And I asked, I haven't heard back from them if they asked the principals or the teachers. So.
I can, and I can address the middle school piece. And on Wednesdays, we don't have an all-school morning meeting because we can't, we're too big to accommodate on the forms that we're using. You know, we'd be coming over, coming very close to, oh, we'd be over 200 people when you counted staff and everybody else. So if they're having class meetings, we can invite those students, but we're not having a morning all-school meeting. And the email, I received an email from Michelle Harrington about that, about a student. I did not hear from a parent.
Thank you. Cheryl Charles.
Thank you. I still have, I've been raising questions about the paraprofessionals actually for the last several meetings. And let's, let's just address it at our next regular meeting. I would point out for everybody that this was convened as a special meeting of the board, the supervisory union, especially to get what, what Chris and the whole team has offered tonight. That is an update on what's going on with reopening of the schools. But for our next regular meeting, I, I would like to understand of all the people we let go late spring last year, the many paraprofessionals in that category, really, how many we've reached out to, to invite back. And Jess is quite right about the change in the agreement whereby paraprofessionals would be on every bus. I understand the staffing problem you're talking about, Chris. I'm trying to figure out the gap between having let so many people go and how many we invited back and why there are not regular paraprofessionals in addition to those filling the gaps you're describing, and Andy is as well, around the, the 504s and the individualized educational plans for students. So not now, but, but again, this is maybe the third or fourth time I've asked. So I'd like it on the regular meeting to be addressed a little bit more, more fully. And about the topic of all the children, those in the Vermont Virtual Learning Academy and those in whichever hybrid model they're, they're in, being able to join all the students on Wednesdays, I think there's a real need for clear communication around that to all the parents and all the families so that that opportunity in a coherent way is made available to all the children, as was expressed earlier. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Cheryl.
David, I can, I can answer quickly Cheryl's immediate question, but dive deeper next time if you'd like, or I could wait.
Andy, if you, if you have a answer now, let's have it. I realize that Chris may also be able to have some input here.
Yeah, sure. I mean, very, very briefly. We have called back, we, I personally called back every single para that was, that was RIFED to offer them a position. We currently have four, maybe five open positions. And some of that has to do with the fact that we've had some kids move in, but we've also had some people who either have been offered positions within, within our own district as like a teaching position or something. So initially we were looking to call them back on, on the RIF list, but then they were offered a teaching position. I'm never going to stand in the way of someone, you know, moving forward in their career. Or they took other positions. Uh, or they took other positions, or we we've had some people resign because of uh COVID concerns. So initially, we were going to have every, you know, we we had opportunities to invite everybody back. Um, and we still have some open positions. As far as the bus issue, um, just real quick with the staffing, because we we need our folks when the kids are in the building. If I were to have, if I were to ask paras or have paras work on buses in the morning or the afternoon, it would mean I would have to stagger them, so they'd have to come in early and go home. They would go home earlier, or they'd come in late and go home later because of the timing, which would mean we'd actually need more staff just to cover what we're doing. And the complexity of trying to find someone for a bus monitor is that you're asking someone to maybe be there early in the morning and then come back later in the afternoon um in that sense. So that is why it's been so difficult to hire that position.
That's extremely helpful, Andy. Thank you.
Sure. Chris?
Yeah, and I can just to, just to follow up a little bit, um, I gave, you know, a verbal report in July in regards to, we asked of all the paras and the, you know, all of them, I believe, except for four or five, were not able to come back. And the complexity behind um, we're down for positions, but the level of services has changed so much within the IEPs that it takes more time to do that. So um, yes, it is in it, we did a agree within it, within the power of the CBA last year, that we have it in there that we can assign paraeducators to the buses. If we weren't in the current COVID situation we were in, we'd be moving in that direction. But under the current circumstances, those, we had to use those bodies to provide student services rather than put them on buses.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Jason Terry?
I just wanted to dip back to um phase three, and I didn't know when the next meeting would be and if we could have a plan for phase three at the next meeting. I think that is uh critical. We, you know, we all agreed upon when we voted a few weeks back to evaluate this at six weeks. And I just wanted to find out if the plan is to stay in hybrid for all year or if we're going to evaluate and get to phase three as soon as possible. That's, that's my goal, and I hope that's everyone else's goal as well.
I think under the circumstances right now, we, the administrative team meets once a week to reass, to assess the situations before, and will continue to do so. Saying we'll be in hybrid for the rest of the year, I don't think anyone knows that answer. Um, but after, like I said earlier, it's only been two days. We we don't know, um, you know, what we're looking at here, but like I said, we're going to continue to move as fast as we can, as long and do it as safely as we can. And having a plan for phase three by the next meeting with with school just opening up, that's not something I can promise.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just, you know, a- after six weeks, and if everything stays the same, um, I hope that a lot of people will uh be looking to open schools at six weeks. That's all. So, thank you. That's a.
Priscilla Lambert?
You mentioned the um having to stagger the the um paras. But currently, I think their their contract is probably less than um a full 40-hour a week. So if you extended their hours, you would have more time to be able to start them in the morning and have ones, one group go um on the morning buses and maybe one group go on the afternoon buses.
That that is correct. We.
It is.
That that is correct. Um, in in some cases. Um, I will tell you that we probably have done at least a dozen models for trying to um meet the needs of kids um with paraprofessionals. We've had to move them from buildings to buildings, from pods to pods, as as things have just adjusted. So it it's just we, we constantly keep um readjusting to meet those needs. Again, it's not as simplistic as as it's being presented because the buses leave from the high school. So therefore, people need travel time to get from place to place, because we really looked at this when we were first asked to look at it. And the amount of time that that people would have to leave, we would have gaps in in the service time that we'd be able to provide. And we just didn't in the, with the current staffing we have, we wouldn't be able to meet all the needs of kids. And so so that's where the complexity came in. Because you've got to figure out the the travel time and the bus run time. And how are you going to, you know, if a person's going to leave Central to get to a bus to get on the afternoon run, then they're going to have to leave Central, drive over um to the high school, get on that bus and do that run, however long that run is. And and, you know, so we looked at different models. I mean, we 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 spent a lot of time on it this summer trying to get it right, and we just couldn't get it done right now. So it's something we're willing to.
However, Andy, let me add add one thing to that. The afternoon run would not require a para to check temperatures and do that health check. Only the morning run does, and if if the para was on that bus and delivering the students to the school where she's going to be, she would be at the school in time to service those children. Is that something?
But how would you, but, but Priscilla, somehow she's got to get on the bus. Somehow she has to get on the bus. The bus leaves the high school. The bus doesn't leave from Central. So then, when she gets to Central, if she gets off the bus at Central, she somehow has to get back to her car at the, at the, at at the high school. So there's somewhere there's travel time involved in all of this that that if everybody worked right out of the high school, it would be great. If all of our buildings were at one facility, it would be great. If our buses stayed at those facilities, it would work perfectly. So I I'm, I I understand what you're saying. We have looked at this, and we really tried to make it work because when the, when the first directive was to have health monitors on the bus and and to do those checks, that's what we were asked to do, and we really looked at, can we make it happen? And then, as the AOE guidance shifted and 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 whatnot, because we weren't, you know, that was the reason, that was, I mean, the AOE guidance shifted, so we didn't keep pursuing it. But we did look at it very hard, and we can continue to look at it. I, yes, you're, my example of the afternoon wasn't the greatest example. I understand that. Um, but we did look at that morning run, and again, that was the complexity of it. As we move deeper into this, I think we could definitely look at it and see, um, you know, once, once we see how it plays out here in this next week, I I I could give you a better answer.
I think that it also is that we say over and over again is that there's the the travel time, any time that we're looking at travel time for these paras, that means it's services that are not being met on the IEPs. And so we got to put that as our first priority. Like I said all along, we're going to continue to revisit this and hopefully get to a place where we can have paras on the bus. But it's not going to happen overnight. Andy's right. We've spent a lot of time working on this. And we'll continue to work on it. But we just can't flick a switch and say we're going to have paras on the bus as much as we want to.
All right, anyone else? Well, um, thank you, uh, Chris, for the um extended um discussion under the superintendent's report. Thank you, Lynn, for your inputs, and Andy, thank you for um the clarifications, which I think have been useful. It's very frustrating if you're a board member, but it must be even more frustrating if you're an administrator. And I think your boards do realize that. Um, uh, we are actually down to questions and answers. And um, do we have any uh questions that we can address? Ideally, those would be questions that we haven't already addressed.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, well, in that case, director's comments. Um, Deb Wright, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Deb?
And uh and um I simply want to say that I I know that everyone is doing a lot of work. Um, I understand that a lot of our comments as directors are from frustration and feedback that we're getting from parents and children as well. And um, and that's it, that we we move along, we try to do this together um without biting each other's heads off. And I think that's all I think.
Uh, Jason Benson, um, you've been in attendance tonight. A director's comment?
There we go. Found the new button. Yeah, I I I'm pleased with all the positive feedback we've been getting from the principals and the teachers. Having good luck with our initial restart. I'm sure I speak for everybody when I say it's, I'm anxious to see it move forward and get on past week six. I understand that this is a very challenging time for everybody to work through. And I think with uh perseverance and determination, we'll get there. As for now, we need to proceed with caution and and only other comment is it would be nice to see the bus situation handled a little different. But I understand staffing-wise, that might be pretty much impossible right now. So keep up the good work, everybody. We'll all get together. I know our board meeting is coming up pretty soon, and we'll talk to you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, Jessa West Clark?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessa. Um, Lynn Morgan?
Thank you. Goes out to all the administrators that have worked so hard, as well as the teachers. It sounds like it's starting to pay off. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, Jason Terry?
Uh, yeah, just real, real quick, um, so far, so good. Thank you, everybody. And uh please stay diligent and uh please do not get comfortable and keep, keep on doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, George?
Uh, yeah, um, I, though we're just getting into it, um, let's keep thinking, thinking ahead, keep, keep uh trying to think ahead. And as I had mentioned to Chris previously, I'd be happy to be part of any uh brains, brain, um, um, oh, I just lost my train of thought, sorry. Brainstorming um sessions um to help, help, help look ahead. I don't want to just be here and now. Let's explore options otherwise, and I'd be happy to be a part of any of those. So, um, thank you all. Night.
Thank you, George. Jack Brier?
I'm pleased to hear that Jessa got at least a sample of the phone calls that I got the last uh 10 days or so. Um, this is nice to know somebody's pinch hitting. The um, I think that what I've heard is an awful lot of anxiety, but I've also heard people say that uh uh they've been pleased by what they've heard, with a couple of exceptions. I think uh special ed is going to be hard and is hard. I think that busing is going to be hard, though uh VPR uh had a news article today describing the statewide situation as something just barely short of a train wreck, and we're not there. So uh uh we're uh, we're doing reasonably well compared to some of our peers out there. And uh, um, I'm sure that all of us will catch the occasional phone call. And uh if parents or teachers or anyone has concerns, uh, the boards do serve as the interface between the institution and the public, and that's what we're here for. So um, I guess keep those phone calls coming. We'll see.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, Molly?
Thank you, David. I was, haven't looked forward to a school board meeting in quite a while. Um, I was very pleased to hear how things have gone the last two days, and that's the only reason I'm sat here is because I was, I I wanted to hear how we're doing. I'm very pleased that we invited the principals and that everybody heard how well everything is going. Everyone has worked ever since March to figure out how this was going to happen. And I'm, I'm pleased to be proud of it. Thank you for everyone's hard work.
Thank you, Molly. Uh, Cheryl Charles?
Well, I would echo that. Thank you, Molly. I want to especially thank Chris for reaching out to all the principals and asking them to come, to everybody who's been here tonight, to all the members of the public. You know, we're all in this together, so thanks to each and every one of you uh for your role tonight and everything you're doing to serve the kids and the community.
Thank you, Cheryl. Priscilla?
Um, yes, um, I would encourage, continue looking at staffing, both paras and teachers as needed. Um, I want to also recognize that um our resident school in our district, Vermont Academy, did COVID testing last weekend with the result that all students there are also testing negative. And so that's a good plus to add to the fact that we still had no COVID recognized in any of our districts. Um, I'd also like to recognize the work that all school personnel are doing. I particularly enjoyed the video that was put out by Laura and her staff for for Sexton's River and their return to school. So I wanted to mention that. Um, and if any of you haven't seen that, that was very well done, so I would encourage looking at it. Thanks for working as hard as you do, all of you. We appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Um, I will point out that both uh the board members, the administrators, um, and also the teachers, the paras, the staffers are all operating under circumstances that we could never have envisioned a year ago. And it's been extremely difficult. And I think that um what we are seeing has been a pretty good example of grace under pressure. I know how difficult it is for me, and I realize it must be vastly more difficult to um be um on the the front lines, either as the superintendent of schools or anyone who's in the buildings. And I just want to say that um extraordinary effort. And I hope that we can continue to pull together and uh provide um a great education for kids as we have in the past. And certainly, um, it's going to be interesting with such an uncertain future. So once again, thank you all, everyone, for your hard work. Um, it is eight eighteen. I'm going to declare the WNESU meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here.